Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 16, 2021 work session agenda of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda tonight. First on the agenda is an ordinance to accept Community Foundation at Eastern Shore grant funds for poetry book, and City Administrator Julia Klans and poet laureate Nancy Mitchell are here for that. So Nancy, you want to come up and sit in the front?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I don't know some of you, but this is a great chance to say hi.
Would you sit there? Yeah, we're recording it, so if you sit right there and speak into the mic.
I'll sit here, okay.
Yes, please. I'm going to ask everyone, please speak into the mic, because last time, we had a rough time hearing some of the people during the minute gathering of the minutes. So if you would do that, we would appreciate it.
So, Mr. President, I'll jump in and then turn it over to Nancy for the specifics. So before you is an ordinance to accept a grant in the dollar amount of $2,000. Nancy applied for a grant from the Community Foundation to put together a book of local poems. So that is before you. And Nancy, I'm sure you'd love to talk about the specifics. And so if you want to jump into that, that'd be great.
Okay, great. Yeah, since I was appointed poet laureate, I've written 15 poems for the city for certain auspicious occasions, and will be writing more, I think, before next spring. Also, I've had some wonderful, wonderful guests on my Poets on the Plaza reading series on the plaza before COVID, among them Jack Heath, who wrote an original poem and read it. I had to strong-arm him into doing it, but he did it, and I really appreciated it, as well as the mayor was on there and other students from different schools in the county and in the city. So I thought it'd be a great way to celebrate how poetry has been accepted and embraced by others in the county and have living proof, a legacy to pass on and to hold and to donate to the library. Yeah, I just remembered I wrote a poem for them as well for their 150th celebration as well. Michelle Gregory was on my Women's History Month Zoom and read one of her original poems. So, you know, hoping these will all be original poems written in celebration of the people in our city as well as events in our city. And I welcome all of you, all, if you feel inclined to write a poem to be included in this book. I'm going to learn a lot. I'll be working with Saltwater Media, and we'll put together a book. And with, I welcome your input for that in terms of, I've kind of got a working title, but in terms of the cover, and I would love to be as inclusive as I can of all the artists and to celebrate our city. This is an example of a book that's approximately 70 pages of poems. And so I'm looking, this is, there's a lot of wiggle room in here, and I've talked with Saltwater Media, and they're very happy to work with me on that. But to have enough to fill a book and to have something that kind of remains. They're children's poems. I was at the Wild Fowl Museum Del Marvillo's celebration, and there was a lovely young poet. I think she was probably 10 years old, and she read an original poem. So yeah, that would be, that would be something that would be in there as well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, questions, Council?
She just, I love poetry. So I love to write poetry, and I have a book of poetry.
Very good. Well, I hope you'll write a poem to be included, which would be wonderful. So, and I'd like to get you a recording of you doing it as well, to film you doing it. We have so many Poets on the Plaza guests, but I wanted to have it be in our city to celebrate the poets and the writers and the people that have had the courage to say, "I'll try." So.
And maybe for the cover, you know, we've got some murals around the city that could, you know, maybe be included.
Yeah, I thought about that. Yeah, that would be terrific. And as you see, and I talked with Saltwater Media about including art in the pages too, which would be wonderful.
Yeah.
You know, and I just think that's such a great idea. And we have so many, so much art in terms of the, what are they called, the electric boxes all over the place. So it would just be wonderful. Yeah. Photography, gosh, we have so much talent here that to have it in one place, to hold it and to say, "This is, this is who we are," would be great.
What a lovely idea. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Angela. Thank you.
Thank you for your great service.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
I just want to say one thing. There is nothing, nothing more terrorizing to a chemical engineer than to be asked to write a poem and actually present it to the public. So, and I did it without passing out, which I thought was really good. But it was afterwards, it was, first of all, it was very nice. And it wasn't that hard to do, once you sit down and decide you're going to do it. So I would encourage everybody to try it, because every squirrel, blind squirrel can find a nut once in a while. And I did. But thank you, Nancy, for what you do. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. And I am offering to hold a poetry writing workshop if you want to just give it a try and write something. It just, it just would be wonderful to have the whole city council represented as, as poets.
I think I'll write mine on the mural that's coming to VFW.
That's a good.
Oh, that's a great idea. That's wonderful. So thank you so much. And Jack's poem is wonderful, and you can see it on the poet laureate Facebook page. You can see him read it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Well, thanks for that, Nancy.
Video.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is an ordinance to accept CFES, Community Foundation grants for Salisbury Wycomico Integrated First Care Team, SWIFT. And it's always good to talk about this, one of the great successes in our city. So, Mr. Gladwell, Chief Gladwell.
Maybe Jimmy can write a poem about SWIFT.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
I'd be lucky if I can write my name. Good evening, Council folks.
Good evening.
So before you, you would have an ordinance relating to the Salisbury Wycomico First Care Team. We applied for it, was approved through the CFES for $2,000 through their mini-grant program. So the purpose of that grant is to, that whole grant is to benefit, excuse me, I'm sorry, Health and Human Services, Education, Arts, Culture, Community Development, the Environment, Historical Preservation. The SFD SWIFT team is going to utilize this funding to support the transportation needs of its clients who do not have a method of transportation to and from doctors, visits, and other healthcare-related appointments, including COVID-related health needs. So that's what we have.
Questions for Deputy Chief?
Every dollar we can get for that program goes a long way.
Absolutely.
The Community Foundation is amazing. We continue to have a partnership with them, and they have really supported us throughout the last 20 months or so through, with all the COVID-related, I say merchandise, PPE that we have needed. There was times last year when we were considering cutting trash bags up as gowns and, you know, using handkerchiefs for masks, because PPE wasn't available, funding was tight, and they really, really have come through for us. So we appreciate their, their efforts.
I do have one, one request. Initially, we were, we were counting the number of saved 911 calls. Do you remember back when we started the program? I wonder if we can get an update on that in terms of.
I do not know it right now, but I can get it. That's not a problem.
If you get it, whenever you get it, could you present it, and we'll get you on the agenda.
I'll make sure that Chief gets that information to you. I'm not sure exactly when. He's on vacation the rest of the week, but I'll make sure that you have it.
I'm blessed when he needs it. Okay.
Our SWIFT 2.0 program started this past week as well, and it's, it's running. We're trying to work out the kinks in it, but it's already showing dividends as far as EMS units arriving on the scene and David and Tammy showing up and then relieving that EMS unit. So now it becomes available for what really is a, an emergent call as opposed to a need that's already providing dividends. So David's doing a fantastic job.
That's great.
Mr. President, Chief, I don't know if, when the last time we had a SWIFT update here. I know we just had an internal one. That may be something that we want to get on a work session to update the council and the community.
We can make that happen. It's not a problem. I can get with David and get you some numbers and statistics.
Perfect. And just call Julie, and then she'll get it on the agenda.
Okay, very good. We'll make it happen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great day.
You too.
Next, we have parking meter removal on Broad Street and Field Operations Director, Ben's not here. I didn't see Ben.
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation. Jana, Jana Potvin will be presenting along with our intern in the mayor's office, Mackenzie.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. My name is Mackenzie Nickel, and I'm an intern with the mayor's office. So we have worked with Field Ops and the mayor's office to write an ordinance about removing the old-style parking meters on Broad Street. These parking meters only collect coins, which makes them outdated, given Salisbury's move towards meters that can take card and cash. Due to the low traffic in the area, installing new parking meters is not financially feasible, given the cost to install the meters. Therefore, at this time, we just want to remove the old meters. Any questions?
That was very well done. I like that. Can you work with everybody else? Your, your new assignment is to, we got the message. Are there any others that, or we have the same kind of an issue?
Not that I'm aware of. Just as a background on these, the revenue collected last year was $207.15. And several of the parking meters actually do not work at all, even if they're fed, doesn't, doesn't do anything. We do two collections, or they've also written two citations, you know, for people who have failed to pay the meter. So they're not in a high, high-revenue area, a high-use area.
Okay. Question?
Yes. How many meters are you talking about, just for curiosity?
Eight or 20.
Okay.
I don't have the exact number, but there's like a group of like 10 and another group of eight. Sorry.
What are we going to do with all those meters?
Well, Jack can put one in front of his house. He can have the kids.
If you'd like one, you can have one.
No, no, thank you.
If they have value surplus, that is what will, that will happen.
I was just wondering what.
Just out of curiosity, what does it cost to repair one of those old ones? Does anybody know?
Probably can't even find them.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to find somebody to work on Popper Hill Mansion.
That's true.
Fly them in.
Okay, any other questions? Any problem with it?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Nice job, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
That's what I like. Next, we have East Lincoln Avenue M&amp;L Rentals LLP Annexation, and Mr. Bill Holland will run us through that. Hi, Bill.
Good afternoon. We're coming back with 535 East Lincoln Avenue to get these two resolutions to a council meeting, Resolutions 3105 and 3106. The purpose of this annexation is that the owner or petitioner signed a pre-annexation agreement due to septic failure and was hooked into a city water and sewer. The property went to the planning commission, was rezoned to R8, contains a little less than a quarter acre land, improved by one, two-story, single-family dwelling. Upon annexation, after, after, after the annexation is effective, the owner will pay a contribution fee of $1,712, which will go towards the reinvestment in existing neighborhoods. That's about what that big pile of paper comes down to.
Okay. Questions from the council?
No.
No questions?
No.
We have, move it on?
Yes.
Yes, we have agreement. All right, Julie, we'll move that on to the, to the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a resolution to adopt park amenity donation and tree planting donation policy, Department of Infrastructure and Develop. Amanda, good to see you. And Alyssa, good to see you.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. So yes, I have Alyssa Hastings joining me today. She helped work on this policy. So the city has an existing donation policy just for the city park, and it only applies to trees and benches. And so it's come to our attention that there are other things that people may want to donate and may also want to donate to all city parks. So this policy expands this to include anything else, such as picnic tables, the little free libraries, the refillable water bottle stations, drinking water stations, as well as trees and benches and trash cans and that type of thing. So it really gives us the ability to have people donate whatever they would like to help improve our, our city parks. So that's, that's half of the policy. In that half, and you can see in your package, there's a lot of detail in the policy, we've outlined the costs that include the cost of the item installation and then maintenance for a couple of years. So we would set up an account, and we've talked to Keith Corddry. So we would have sort of a revolving fund. So it would go in, and then we have it ongoing that Field Operations could use it for maintenance of those items. We can update the amounts with the fee ordinance every year, but essentially, you know, this policy is given an amount that would be typical for these items. We will work with the Parks and Recreation Committee on locations of the items, as well as species of trees. But the trees are, tree species are noted in our tree canopy study. So for items like this that are donated, the city would have responsibility for routine maintenance. We would also replace any trees that didn't survive two years, because that's our typical policy. And as I said, there would be a separate fund that we will use for expenses, and we will send an accounting of that fund to the Parks and Recreation Commission, so that we are accountable for, for how those funds are being spent. So the other half of this policy is for tree planting donations. And this is a little bit different. This is when an outside organization wants to come in and donate trees and do a planting day, such as what we've been talking about with Chesapeake Utilities. So it's great that they're proposing that, but we really didn't have a policy to lean on to say, "Here's what we'd like you to do." And there have been tree plantings in the past that's become burdensome on city staff. So we wanted to be very clear, if an outside organization wants to donate trees and do a planting day, that it is their responsibility. So this outlines what their responsibility would be, such as planting the trees themselves or hiring a contractor to do so. And then they would be responsible for some maintenance of the trees. We were not proposing permanent plaques. We don't want plaques everywhere. So they would be recognized on our social media, as well as the city website. And we will give them an agreement that states where it's going, the number of trees, and indemnity clause, you know, the full, so that everyone's clear on responsibilities for the plantings. So as I said, Alyssa had helped work on this policy. We've met with the Field Operations Department, and we also took it to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and they voted on it at their July meeting in support of this.
Okay, questions? Ready? I have, so the one that we attended down by the water, the pump by the.
So that was Wycomico Environmental Trust.
Gotcha.
And Cypress Trees.
Right. Okay. So that's, that kind of thing would be covered.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that would be covered. Yes.
What about a large donation? Would that be covered under this, or would that have to come separately? Let's say, just, and I'm not saying anybody's going to do it, if somebody wanted to donate a new bandstand.
Yes. So that would still have to come back before you. So this is just smaller. I don't recall if the policy was under $5,000.
Yes.
I think smaller donations, if $5,000. Yeah. So anything much larger like that would still come back before you.
Okay, good. Any other questions? No. Sounds good. Sounds like a good policy. We move it forward?
Yes.
Yes. Julie will move that forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Alyssa. Next, we have Procurement Director Jennifer Miller talking about a surplus of Mitchell Landing Apartments. Debbie's coming up. Debbie Stan will, is coming up too. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Yes, Debbie knows much more about Mitchell Landing than I do. So I'm here to introduce the concept of asking the council for the approval to surplus the Mitchell Landing Apartments. It's 24 units, some three-bedroom, some two-bedroom units. I don't know how long the city has had that property, but per the administration, I think the time has come for the city to divest of its responsibility and turn that over to somebody else who could much better manage such a property.
Okay, we think we're all very familiar with it. Any questions or comments?
I mean, just, you know, really, cities don't, and governments in general, don't do very well at managing housing projects. So this is probably for the best. Let people that do it professionally, let them do that. So.
I pushed the button.
I'm the only one that has to push the button.
That's not intentional.
That's where I sat in the other meeting, so I know.
My question again would be, when we do surplus this building, will there be affordable housing?
Yes, it needs to remain in the same type of arrangement that it is now. That's a term of the loan that we got from CDA. I don't even know what that stands for.
Yes. Yes, the loan came from DHCD. CDA is a portion, is a section of DHCD. So yes, the loan stipulates that we have to operate the project according to all the regulations associated with the Partnership Rental Housing Program. And as long as we continue to operate the facility according to those regulations, we don't have to pay back the loan. Now, if we're going to divest ourselves of the property, then we will have to pay back the loan. But what we're hoping is that Green Street Housing, in association with Wycomico County Housing Authority, will be able to take the project over, because obviously that's what they do for a living. And so they're much better equipped to, to run the property than we are. Now, during the entire life of the project, we have always been required to hire a professional management company. We have never tried to do it ourselves. That was one of the regulatory requirements. But still, things have not transpired the way we had hoped recently. So we're hoping to be able to get Green Street Housing to take it over and rehab it properly and begin managing it themselves.
Now, I just heard you say rehab. So there will be renovations and things that will have to come.
That's my understanding. We haven't obviously put it out for any sort of a proposal yet to see who's going to, what, what their plans are. But that's, that's my understanding at this point in time. I know they've, they've been doing their due diligence and doing a lot of inspections of the property and, and determining what the situation is.
And we will be kept abreast of this information.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Actually, I was shocked when I found out that we owned them. I said, my first thing was, what are we doing running housing? So I agree with Mir. It's not our expertise. We're, and I think it's a great move. Probably should have done, been done a while ago, but now we're on the right path, I think. And so we have moved that forward? Everybody's agreement?
Yes.
Okay, Julie, we move that forward. Mrs. Sullivan, you have a comment?
Yes, just to be clear, the declaration of surplus does offer the property and all of its improvements, including any existing contracts for sale to the public at large. Any entity, individual for that matter is open and has the opportunity to purchase. And regardless of who or what entity makes an offer to purchase, all of those matters are subject to your final approval.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But I think also, it's, it's, how would they go about, when it's put up as a surplus, then we put it up for bid for sale, and then you would accept proposals?
Yes.
For that process?
Sure. So we could do one of two things. We could utilize the services of, excuse me, KNLB. That's the real estate provider that's currently handling our surplus properties for us. We could use them as a conduit to market the property and so on. I would have to understand the stipulations for, you know, the, that transfer of the loan. Should another, you know, so when we sell the property, we pay off that loan. If there's any stipulations there, that would have to be made very clear upfront. So yes, we could possibly look at KNLB. We could possibly look at our old method of seeking requests for proposals from developers or other entities to ask them to give us a proposal on how they would run, you know, run the property, how they would rehabilitate the property, and so on and so forth. So we could do, we have two options.
Yeah, because I think the important thing, and I think everybody will agree here, that when we do sell it, that it does not disrupt the lives of the current residents and tenants there. I think that's primary on, on, you know, from my perspective. So I think that's something to consider as well. So not just to sell it to any, any person who has the money to buy it, but when they do buy it, it's got to be run a certain way, certain expectations, and, and that stuff that we probably could attach to the sale and all that stuff.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can attach whatever conditions you think are reasonable with respect to the surplus and sale of the property.
Great.
So when that decision is made, you'll bring us a recommendation, whether to go with KNLB or?
Sure. And I'd be glad to share with you if we, however we do that, you know, if it's a request for proposal process, show you upfront what those conditions are.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, we'll move that forward then.
Yes, to be clear, Mr. President, you would like to move forward with procurement, working with the Stam's office to provide you with either a bid package requesting bids for the purchase, or alternatively, a listing package for listing it with.
We have to surplus it first.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's what we're doing. We're going to, and then they're going to come back with, with a proposal.
Thank you.
Right? Got it. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. Thank you. Okay. The last item on the agenda I've asked to have put on, and I'll start off by saying, I think that we've done a good job as a council and individual council members for the people in their district. It's really, if you look at what has been accomplished, it's because of the efforts of the people around this table. And that's a good thing. And I think that we're, we are, actually, we've learned a lot from the mayor in terms of nothing happens fast enough for us. And that's not a bad thing either. But I think sometimes we, in our, in our exuberance, we tend to fall out of what we should, what we've agreed to do normally. And everybody's guilty of that, I think, at some point or another. And I just want to remind everybody that, given the fact that our mayor is the same, that kind of person who wants to get things done, and Julia has exhibited that during her time that she was covering for the mayor, I think we have to be very careful in calling or asking questions and asking things to be done by the staff directly. You can imagine what the, what the department has, and you can nod or not nod or smile or whatever. But there's a lot on their plates, and we don't know what those, what those things are that are on their plates. And I think it puts them under, hello? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. It puts them under a lot of pressure if they're torn between, wait a minute, should I answer that person, or should I not answer that person, or should I, what should I do? So what I'm asking is that we become aware of that. And I try to do it all the time. You can go to Julia, or you can go to Andy and say, "Listen, I got a question for so-and-so. Is it okay if I call them?" Or if they're really busy, "Can you get me the information?" Or Julia may say, which she said to me, "I'll get you the information and get it back to you." And I think that's a reasonable request. So please try to do that. So please try to do that. That's something that we can help them, because it takes pressure off of them and allows them to...I'm sure there's a list that each of them have that probably have 20 items on it, maybe more. Maybe 30. And I think that if we do that, it'll help the situation. I see people nodding, and I see people smiling, so I think that they agree. And it's not a hard thing to do, but just say, let's be aware of it and try to help out wherever we can. I'll open the floor up now for comments. Mr. Mayor, any comments for the good of the order?
Well, I'll be real brief just on that topic, to just say that, you know, we're blessed with a rock star city council, and so I...you know, Mr. President, it's your prerogative to say any of the things that you've said thus far, and I just want to reiterate, though, that we've been really blessed. So thank you for all of you, and thank you for also understanding the distresses and burdens on our rock star team of employees. The second thing I just want to say is, Julia just showed me the updated numbers. We had Habbaki Pedion called me on Sunday, and I think the early numbers were just starting to come in. But we have a 8%...8% of our city's population is of Haitian origin, which is larger than our Latino population. So I just want people to recognize that there are a lot of families that are probably hurting today. 1,400 dead as of right now. That's the updated death toll in Haiti from the earthquake. So I suspect...I know that explicitly, you, each of you, will be asked, and I've been asked, I'm sure we'll all hear, that we're needed to participate in outreach or in, you know, fundraising drives, or, you know, could be water, could be tents, could be other supplies. But there's a lot of families directly connected to us that are...that may have lost someone or are experiencing some sort of hurt right now. So I would just ask everybody to be keenly aware for that and think about your friends in the Haitian community in Salisbury. And then I know Mr. Pedion, one of the things that he's thinking about is also getting some people to go down there and help, to volunteer. So I know we're all busy here, but if you know people that are interested and willing, I'm sure the ask is going to come out soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boga?
On the communication thing, a couple of things I typically do when I have...depending on the issue, some stuff I'll go in and key it in, and that thing we have on the front page, like if there's a stop sign that's fallen over or something, or people upset about the way intersection is, I'll go in and key it in, and then it goes to the right people to go take a look at that. The other thing is if there's other issues, and it might involve a certain department, if I do email the department head, I CC Julia, the mayor, and Andy, and Jack. Then that way, at least the boss knows that I sent something up, and he's not surprised when, you know...so that's kind of like how I do it on the communication piece, in that way, it, you know, we hand it off to those that are responsible. They're usually very well, as we all know, responding, and then if I have to respond back to the constituent, you know, they appreciate the timeliness of stuff. I'm sure if Mr. Pedion wants to contact me, I'm sure between the...one of the...one or both of the stores will...we can coordinate some water and stuff, and I'll jump on that tomorrow at work, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I would just like to thank Mayor Dick Dick, the entire city council, acting county council, County Executive John Posoto, Wycomico Health Department, Salisbury Fire Department, and many others that attended and supported the VFW 10159's Third Annual Unity Day. It was a great success, and it would not have been a success without you all. So I just want to thank everyone again for that and hope to see you all again next year for the fourth annual. And also COVID. Stay safe, mask, social distance, just be careful. And the Wycomico County, I can actually say Saturday they had 12 vaccines, so that's a plus. And just continue, everyone that has not gotten their vaccine, please get your vaccinations, please. It's for your benefit and for others. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Angela?
Well, going back to communications, I understand that, Dr. Yu, you email a department head and then just CC what's been in the administration?
Yeah, if it's something that's not...
Okay.
Major, you know.
Do you prefer that? Is that okay, or would you?
Then Jack...I mean, I'm just...I just want...if we're talking about communication, then let's...what is exactly how it's done, because that's a different thing that I understood, that I understood that I was to do, so.
What do you prefer?
I don't know. I think, you know, one...questions sent CC-ing the executive office supervisor, whether that's Andy, whether that's Julia, or myself, you know, we try to copy all of us on everything, and that's just the way we do all communications internally. So, you know, whenever it's a department head, Julia and Andy, like if our task management, for example, Asana, all communications include all three of us. But, you know, I'll be honest with you, it's going to take me a while to see it, so...
Yeah.
Best...but yeah, I think CC-ing is great, you know, and, you know, alternatively, sending it to Julia and asking for an answer is fine, too, and then she can get it from the department. But either one is fine.
I think the point...the point that we have to make, though, if that happens that way, it's going to be...it'll go into the queue, and depending on what it is, it's going to be...the decision is going to be by the staff member.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
I mean, if you don't know, like, what department it is or something, then that's...but if you know, I mean...
Yeah, because if you put it on the site, like you said, if there's a...
Yeah.
Something falls over, it goes on the site, well, they'll put it in a priority based on the emergency...
And they respond pretty fast on there if it's something basic, like, you know. But if it's something like at a larger scale...
A detailed question or something.
Or, yeah, yeah, or a policy thing or something.
And if it's something that you know is really, in your area, is something that is critical, I would suggest you call.
Okay, well, could I ask one question here? As far as we're talking about communication, are we also talking about communication, us getting communication of different events that are going on in the city, and we are not notified?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think that...I had brought that up before, and I believe Chris is responsible for letting us know of the events that are happening. We should be getting those from Chris.
Yeah, we have a policy and have had it for now years, that 100% of press releases and media alerts include all council, as well as the three in the executive office. And, yeah, any event typically includes a media alert as well, so that would be included. Now, that being said, we are also in the midst of standing up a comprehensive calendar. The structure is already there on the city website, but that comprehensive calendar would have all...everything we know about that the city is in charge of or that is using a city facility that is public information. I mean, there are times when somebody's doing a wedding at the amphitheater or something like that, where that doesn't need to be on all of our calendars, but from an event standpoint, we think...
You can certainly crash the wedding at the amphitheater. You give my point.
At the reception. Reception part. I said that is because there's been some miscommunication with us about...and it may be trivial to some people, but it means a lot to me when something's going on in my community and I don't...in my district, and I don't know it. And then I have to hear it from someone else. That causes a problem with me, because I could arrange...it gives me a problem with trying to arrange my schedule when I've already made a schedule, and if I know something in advance, then I could, you know, more so be there. But here lately, it's been really, like, rocky with some communication as far as us knowing some of the events that are going on.
Councilwoman Jackson, please know that that is not the intent, and perhaps we could talk offline about what specific events those were and make sure we rectify them.
Oh, no, I...actually, I know they're not...they weren't, you know, meant to be like that. I'm just saying that there needs to be better communication. I'm not saying something was done callously, I'm just saying there needs to be...
Sure, we just want to make sure that doesn't happen. Maybe we could talk after.
Okay.
Thank you. Michelle?
Just want to bring up that Wycomico County has the dubious honor of being the second highest cases confirmed cases per thousand in the state. We are now at 4.03 cases per 1,000 residents for COVID-19. We're second only to Dorchester County. Please take this seriously. Please. I know there's a lot of misinformation out there about the vaccines. They are completely safe. In my family, everybody got the Pfizer, with the exception of Nick, and he got the Moderna. And I was down for a day. My daughter and son and husband, who all had the Pfizer, they had no side effects. So please, please get vaccinated. It's incredibly important. The Lower Shore in particular has been really hard hit by this, and we really, really need to be more diligent about everything. And, you know, we're only just...it's not even September yet, and the projection is that the fall is going to be really rough, and we really, really, really need to be better about all of it. And please, you know, if you're able to, please get vaccinated.
Thank you. Angela, you want to...you have...you had a question about the procedure, but now, do you have other comments?
No comments.
Okay. Yeah, I...again, relative to COVID, please wear a mask when you're in a crowd, especially indoors. Get vaccinated. It's tragic when you look at the number of children that have died in Florida, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. So please, if you can, get vaccinated as soon as you can. If there's no other further business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.